We're calling and meeting to all at this time. Let us please stand for our invitation and for our pledge allegiance. To the make up the heavens and the earth, we thank you for this great opportunity to serve not only you, but also the people of the city of Florence. We welcome you into this meeting that you will have your way, that all that we do will be for the betterment of the citizens of Florence, not only for today, but also carrying this city into the future, even beyond our presence here on this earth. It is a great honor that we welcome you into this meeting. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, as you can see on our agenda, I would like to ask that we have two addendums before us. And now we seek a motion for each one of these items separately. The first addendum is Addendum for Executive Session A to receive legal advice related to the downtown economic development project thirty dash four dash seven eight two. Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Is the proper motion is second that we add this item to our agendas. If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye, all those opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that a gender item for executive session will be added as read out. The next item for addendum to the agenda is introduction of resolutions. It is a resolution by the city of Florence resigning, recognizing Billy Dee Williams for his considerable contribution to the Florence community. It is, it is the proper motion is second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Let the record reflect that we will be adding resolution to our agenda. All right, and now we have approval of our minutes. The first minutes will be from June twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, the comprehensive plan workshop, and minutes from August ninth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
It's the proper motion is second that we approve the minutes from both date, June twenty seventh, August ninth, twenty twenty one. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And in opposed, like sign. And also, if there's no objections, we do have resolutions, which is resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty and resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty one. Because we have both parties represented here today, if there's, if there's no objections, I would like to move those resolutions forward to now to address before we enter job public here. Hearing no objections, we will first go to our resolution to recognize, I would like for us to go ahead and honor our council member, former council member, former mayor pro tempore, who passed, Councilman Billy Dee Williams, whose wife is here in the audience. And with that resolution, who has that resolution before them? Okay, so Councilman Chiqua McCall has that resolution. Do we have a motion that we? Is the motion second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify aye for the passing of the resolution. So at this time, Councilman McCall, you're welcome to read that into record and present it. I believe we have Councilwoman Billy Dee Williams' family here, and allow you to recommend my staff.
Sure. All right, here we got resolution two zero two one dash thirty three, a resolution by the city of Florence recognizing Billy Dee Williams for his considerable contributions to the Florence community. Whereas Billy Dee Williams was a Florence native and a graduate of Wilson High School. And whereas he served as a Florence City Council member for twenty-two years and was known for being a man for all people. And whereas from two thousand and three to two thousand and ten, Councilman Williams served as the mayor pro tempore for Florence City Council. And whereas he also served on the Board of Directors for the PD Healthy Start Incorporated and was the former chairman of the Florence County Democratic Party. And whereas his work across the community encompass revitalization, affordable housing, and numerous youth programs that provided a foundation to move Florence forward. And whereas Billy Dee Williams is remembered as a productive, humble, kind, and compassionate leader. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Florence, the city of Florence recognizes former councilman and mayor pro tempore Billy Dee Williams for his contributions to the Florence community. Be there resolved this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty one. I'm gonna now ask that the family, uh, be there certified.
And as the family is coming forth, I want you to recognize before us that there's a memorial that has been placed here. This memorial actually has been organized by the city staff to honor Councilman Billy Weave and all of his service. And to both Mr. Anita and to your family, thank you for being there with Councilman Weaves and supporting him as he's served the city. I know that public service is always a position that does not have great financial bearing, but it weighs a lot with the heart of the person serving the community, because that's what he was. He was a public servant. He served this city. So thank you to all of you for supporting him, doing his service. And you have our deepest condolences and prayer during this time of mourning. But truly know, we appreciate the service that he provided for years. Thank you.
As we would like to thank the city of Florence for honoring him with this resolution, because he truly was interested in all of the citizens in Florence, not just the citizens of District One, but the entire city. Yes, so we thank you for this resolution, honoring him.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Anita. Appreciate it.
All right, also do you have any remarks you want to make? I guess you are.
And as the councilman's families supporting, I do want to acknowledge and recognize that not only did we lose Councilman Billy Dee Williams from public service this past two weeks, we also lost the president of the Northwest Associations, Mary Grant. And I know that the combination of a councilperson and a leadership for the community represent a lot. So I do want to acknowledge her passing, but she also was a member of the Polish Chief Advisory Board. So long with Councilman Williams, we lost two great servants. So thank you again. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to say, yes, I'd like to say.
Wait, wait just a moment for order. Um, Councilman, do you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. If you all, if the family would like to make any comments from here, you're welcome to do that. That way it can be recorded. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I would like to thank the entire city of Florence and the council for honoring Billy with this resolution at this time. He truly enjoyed serving on council, and he worked to help to improve conditions for all the people in Florence, not just the citizens of District One, but the entire city. He was interested in helping people to get better housing, also for better wages for the city employees. He was interested in the infrastructure. These were some of the areas, along with programs for the youth and the senior citizens that really touched his heart. And he worked tirelessly throughout his life to help improve the conditions for the citizens of Florence. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes before he leaves, Anita.
Well, um, to, to Chiqua's, my family. Billy, I had the honor of having Billy Williams to endorse me, to help me fundraise, to counsel me, to, um, to, to go over to the house and sit. And as a matter of fact, he was actually in the making of this month, making, um, making contact with someone from Washington to see if we can get money here in South Carolina with me. But I am going to greatly miss him because he has been a vital, vital, vital part of me being here and moving forward. I thank y'all. I love y'all, and we'll definitely be talking in the future.
Thank you.
And I just want to add thank you to a number of friends and colleagues that are here and recognize, I know she's on the program today. This is Mady Robinson, who is the CEO of Healthy Start, and he was the board chair. But all these young people, I'm not sure what you all are here for, but you've really inspired my father, and I hope that you all are future leaders of the city of Florence too, because he would want you to serve not just in the future, but serve in your schools, serve in your communities, and to be leaders that are present today. So we need to continue building up the city of Florence and advancing the city of Florence. And we're looking forward to you and your leadership. And I thank everyone in the community, particularly the community of Florence District One as well, where he got his start and where he looked to serve and look to help people that have been marginalized and disenfranchised, so they have a position of power. They can receive the economic benefits that are in this city as well. So continue to do the work, be unified in the work, and represent your city well. So thank you all for the recognition.
And before you leave, the chair will recognize Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore.
Mrs. Williams and family, it deeply saddened me that Billy has passed away. I was glad that I spoke with him a week before, prior to him dying, because sometimes we did not always agree politically, but on friendship basis, we did. He would often come to my house, and we would sit down and talk. He would give me contacts in Washington DC to try and help bring money to the city of Florence. So you don't always have to agree on things in this meeting politically, but that doesn't mean it should hinder your friendship. And our friendship was never hindered by anything that we did or agreed or disagreed on. Billy is gonna be greatly missed, and often we would talk. And I hope those talks will continue, Anita, throughout the time, because we're gonna miss a man among men. He was a real man among men. He did everything he could to help people, no matter what it, no matter how it involved him, no matter what it took away from what he was doing, he put people first. So I really, we've lost a great leader.
Chair recognizes pro temp.
I would like to just add to what has already been said, not only my personal condolences on behalf of not only myself, but also our entire greater Florence community. We know what a great man Billy, Billy Dee, as we all refer to him as, what a great man he was and what a great contributor he was. But personally, for me, with the work that I did with the Downtown Development Corporation, going back to starting in nineteen ninety-five, Billy Dee was always right there. And I did not want to let this moment pass without recognizing the support, encouragement, the wisdom and guidance and, and contributions that Billy made towards our downtown redevelopment. And I think sometimes, you know, we're all been so busy and so much goes on that sometimes we don't recognize the efforts of those that came before us and the work that they did to help make things possible. And Billy wasn't one of the ones that was out front on a lot of the issues with regard to downtown, but behind the scenes, he worked tirelessly. And I know that, and those of us who were involved day in, day out with the whole downtown redevelopment, we know that, and I just want to, right now, publicly acknowledge and tell you how much his assistance was appreciated by all of us who were involved with the downtown redevelopment for the work that he did. And also, I cannot let this moment pass with also saying, he and Ed Robinson, what a tandem the two of them were, and we miss them both so, so much. So thank you to the family, and I see Erica back there. And we love both Billy and Ed, and they're both greatly missed. Thank you.
You know, the council, chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
Yep, again, I just want to reiterate my condolences to the family and understanding that we lost a true giant in our community. His collection of work is, is readily displayed, whether it's with downtown redevelopment or affordable housing, caring for all people is definitely something that he definitely cared for. And also, I'd like to add is, also, is his daughter, his daughter Adrian here, I mentioned that, you know, about passing the torch, you know, seeing the young people serving politics. Oftentimes, I'll go to Mr. Billy Williams office to have this conversation. We'll talk long into the night, when Mr. Anita Williams say, all right, I'm going to bed. Now y'all, I'm going to sleep. Now y'all talking too late. But he, he was someone who helped, you know, show me the ropes of what it's like to be, uh, to serve the community. And, you know, I'm greatly appreciated for that, because a lot of people won't take too kindly for a twenty-year-old to come in their house talking about he want to serve. But he was someone who helped instill me to be here today, and I understand the enormity of the task that lies ahead of all of us as council members up here. So again, thank you for allowing, you know, us to all, you know, be able to be a part of Billy's life, and he's surely going to be missed. Thank you so much, ma'am.
To any other council member desire to, if not, Mr. Anita, to your family. Thank you, and that is free coverage over you due to stop period. Thank you. Right, this time we will continue with our resolutions that we had moved forward to the beginning of our program. We now have resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty, a resolution by the city of Florence recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Do we have a motion?
No.
So we have a motion and a second. And we have a motion by Councilwoman McCall, second by Councilwoman Barnes. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any like sign. Your folks, let the record reflect that resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty has passed, and we will recognize at this time, Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is a resolution by the city of Florence recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage, Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. And whereas from food and fashion to music and art, Hispanics have had a positive influence on the lifestyle of all Americans and inspire others through their courageous, relentless, and essential labor, sacrifice, and talent. And whereas Hispanic Americans have served as leaders in many fields, including the military, education, science, technology, business, industry, politics, athletics, and entertainment. And whereas Hispanic Americans represent one of the fastest-growing ethnic groups in South Carolina, enriching communities through their strong commitment to family, hard work, and faith. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of, City of Florence is hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Florence and encourage all citizens to celebrate the heritage and achieve achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognize their contributions to the Commonwealth. Resolve this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty one. And I think in the audience, well, I know in the audience, we have Mrs. Erica Robinson. Could you please come forward? And if you have any friends or relatives with you that would like to also come forward, we would appreciate it. I remember the very first day you came to Florence, South Carolina. I was working in the concessions there at Lee Park, and Councilman Ed Robinson brought you there. He didn't speak any English, but he had that look in your eyes like, what are they talking about? But then I said, come and stop, may I move back? And you looked like surprised, but I was the only one to speak to you a little bit. He said, hey, hey, why don't you, she's learning English, why don't you learn French? He said he didn't need you. And now she's a senior in high school. The last thing you go through so many, you graduated from college now, did you hear? You've done remarkable work. Thank you. You even told me you felt my hand when I was asleep. It started, it was eight. And I didn't know it, you know, but thank you. You're welcome. But if you celebrate Hispanic Month, Heritage Month, as it should be celebrated. There are so many things that's done here by the Spanish that people don't know about. But you need to realize all the hard work that's been done on your end and the end of others in the Hispanic community. I remember going up there in York, when I went to my junior, primary junior high school, my date was, was in my greatest. So it's not unusual for me to be associated with that Hispanic community. I love it.
Thank you.
I know we even lecture Ross to shock. Yeah, and we smacking eight and C C P. Councilwoman Robinson liked it. I think even when we left this earth, we still didn't know what we did. Well, Erica, do you have anything you want to say?
I just want to thank every single one of you, Councilmembers, families, members, Councilwoman Pat, it means a lot to be recognized in this resolution as well. Thank you so very much. You're very grateful. Thank you, Councilwoman. And at this time, is there any comments or, you know, the council members at this point? If not, our next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty-one, a resolution by the city of Florence recognizing the sixty-fifth anniversary of St. Anthony's Catholic School. Do we have a motion? Second, is the proper motion second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay, at this time, we will recognize pro temp, to Bailey, to read the resolution into record and to present it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with great pride that I introduce today's resolution on in recognition of St. Anthony Catholic School's sixty-fifth anniversary. And as a prelude, I will say that in nineteen sixty-three, August of nineteen sixty-three, the school was eight years old at that time, and that's where I went, starting in second grade. So my connection back to St. Anthony goes back instead of its sixty-fifth anniversary to its eighth anniversary. I think that says more about me and my age than anything. But anyway, this is a resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty-one, a resolution recognizing the sixty-fifth anniversary of St. Anthony Catholic School. Whereas for the last sixty-five years, St. Anthony Catholic School has educated countless young people from the surrounding communities who have gone on to become successful citizens, parents, employers, and employees in Florence and throughout the world. And whereas St. Anthony Catholic School is the oldest private school in the Florence area and has provided a quality education in the Catholic tradition since nineteen fifty-six. And whereas St. Anthony Catholic School has educated many students in preparation for responsibilities as residents of this community and members of society by fostering integrity, compassion, and concern for others. And whereas the mission of St. Anthony Catholic School is to provide students with a high-quality education that emphasizes the formation of moral values and a commitment to community service. And whereas St. Anthony Catholic School is dedicated to supporting parents in the development of their child's spiritual and intellectual capacities to the fullest, and is further dedicated to supporting the community and family through the highest standards of teaching and example. And whereas St. Anthony Parish School and families work together to form a cornerstone of excellence in education in Florence, and the primary purpose of the school continues to be to provide a high-quality instructional program with a Catholic atmosphere of love and guidance. And whereas the principal and staff of St. Anthony's School strive to provide a comprehensive and challenging academic program to foster the spiritual, intellectual, emotional, social, and physical growth of its students while respecting and supporting individual abilities. And whereas St. Anthony Catholic School is committed to reaching out to all children, regardless of heritage, religion, race, or economic status, and has made this commitment part of their mission. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Florence commends St. Anthony Catholic School in Florence, South Carolina, in recognition of the sixty-fifth anniversary for the contribution to excellence in education and character formation of countless youth from our community and for the extraordinary efforts and commitment of their past and present staff. Resolve this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty one, signed by Teresa Myers, Urban Mayor, approved as deformed by Jim Peterson, City Attorney, attested to by Casey Moore, Municipal Clerk, Madam Mayor. It's okay, I'll step down for the presentation. Now I'm asking members of St. Anthony to come forward at this time. So we have with us Principal Christine Golema here, and I'm gonna be making this presentation to you on behalf of everyone, but if you would like to introduce who we have with us here today, Miss Golema, I appreciate that.
So first of all, on behalf of St. Anthony Catholic School, parents, students, and faculty, we would like to thank the mayor. parents, students, and faculty, we would like to thank the mayor and the city council for this very special recognition. You've always played a part in making our last sixty-five years awesome, and we are excited about moving forward with sixty-five more years. So thank you. On behalf, we have a smattering of students. We have our seventh and eighth grade class here with us today and with a few of our younger grades here with us. We have our, one of our teachers, Mr. Daniel Spivey, and Mrs. Natalie Knight, Social Studies and E L A. We would have loved to have brought the whole crew, but we were guided not to. Strongly guided not to, so anyway.
So on behalf, it's our city manager. But on behalf of the City of Florence, we'd like to go ahead and present this resolution to you and to Saint Anthony in recognition of the sixty-five years. Congratulations. They want everybody to squeeze in a little more, so let's do that.
Forward and then I can, Sebastian step forward, Joey step forward, Alexa step forward. And then everybody else kind of squeeze in back behind. Alex, come this way for me. There you go. Megan.
We have Deacon Reggie and Armstrong with us here as well. And if it's okay, I have Reggie join us.
We are very excited to.
Yeah, this, this way they can catch you here.
Well, we are all very excited to be here today. It is quite an honor. We take this with great pride. And our school is celebrating a big party coming up on Saturday evening with the bishop and then moving on to some good dancing and some fun and food. Everybody is welcome. But thank you very much again for letting us come today and this presentation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And at this time, if there's any council member who wishes to be recognized, whenever questioned, Councilwoman Barnes, recognize at this time.
Um, I, on behalf of my family, we moved here in, well, we're from here, but we moved back here in nineteen sixty-six. My brother, who was a problem child at that time, this was before the school was burned. And the school was up on the corner on Pell Meadow, I think, and, and Irby. Well, my brother was expelled from public schools. And my mom attributes his success to the nerd, to the nuns that did not play. And, and my brother went on and became the forty-fifth president of Payne College. And so I thank you for, for what, you know, at that time, it was not, there was a lot of segregation, but they, you all took my family in, my, my brother, and it made a difference in his life. So thank you for all of your work.
And on behalf of the City of Florence, historical to the present day, thank you for continuing to provide the service that you do, especially to the young people who are the future of this city. And once again, if we could be of service, please let us know. Thank you so much. And thank to all of, especially to all of the educators at this time period especially. Thank you for your dedication to the youth in the future of this city as well to the nation. Thank you. You're welcome.
And thank you all these young people for coming.
Yes.
Ms. Gollum, will they get a credit for their civic class today?
We'll give them a moment as they're exiting. At this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined for you. So at this time, we have our public hearing. And I will open our public hearing in rush two. A public hearing will be held on the Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistant Grant regarding a request for law enforcement equipment. Here is now open, we're here from our chief.
Mayor, Members of Council, each year, as you may remember, those of you who were on council in previous years, the police department seeks a Burns Justice Memorial Assistance Grant from the Department of Justice for law enforcement equipment. This year, the amount of that grant is thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, no match. And a public hearing is required as a condition of that grant, of the application to that grant. Also this year, we will be seeking a compact-like robot, which is actually called a Throwbot. It is a handheld device that will be utilized for law enforcement to be able to clear buildings without having to enter them and computer equipment for our I T.
Is there any discussion and questions for? If not, we recall our public hearing to close. Thank you, Chief. At this time, we will proceed to our appearances before council. First we have before us will be Miss Mady Robinson from the PD Head Start. And she's the Executive Director to provide information on the PD Healthy Start.
Thank you very much, Mayor Myers Urban. And just let me say before I start with my prepared comments, I want to congratulate you. This is my first opportunity to present before this council. And I'd like to congratulate all of the newly elected members and look forward to working with you in services and providing services in the community of Florence and state and the county overall. My name is Mady Robinson. I am the Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer for the PD Healthy Start Program here in Florence. We have been in this community since nineteen ninety-one. We provide services in seven counties. Chesapeake, Darlington, Dillon, Florence, Mary, Marlborough, Williamsburg. Several years ago, not several, two thousand fourteen, we came before council asking for support because we had not received our funding. We did not get our funding. We were not funded. And so earlier, you recognized a gentleman who had served on this council for twenty-two years, I believe. Once he left council, we kept him and he came to work with PD Healthy Start Incorporated. He worked tirelessly in working for, to improve the health of mothers and babies and families in this PD area. He later became chairman of the Board of Directors. And many of you, or some of you were on council. I know three of you, when we came before council to make an appeal, to ask you to help us to provide support so we could keep our doors open until we were able to find funding. I was standing here, Mr. Williams was standing right here telling me to be cool. Don't blow the bridge up because you're asking for support. And I want to thank council. Council came through, not only at that time, but they also came through in other ways. And so I think I came back and said, thank you. But I thank you again for those of you who don't know, because I'll be back again. But today I want to talk to you for a minute about our services. We provide services to women of childbearing age, to adolescents, and to males. We are, and we have programs. I must say that we are still here. We have received, in addition to the grant that we lost, we've received three other grants. And so we're doing the work that we were established to do, to work to improve the, to carry out the mission of working with women, children, and families. One of the programs that we have is called Healthy Marriage Relationship Education. That program works in four counties. We presented a proposal back, a request back in July, I believe it was, because we wanted to do something to not only come to council, but we wanted to, we strive to be good corporate citizens in that we aren't the large, largest facility to provide services and provide employment, but we do employ people. We have approximately forty employees now to include our full-time and contract employees. Most of those persons live in Florence. Most of those people pay taxes. And most of those people have families and they returned to the community, they invest in this community. We wanted to do something in the downtown development area. And so one of my team, Ms. Lirnie Brown is here with me today, who's the director of our Healthy Marriage Relationship Program. And she's doing an excellent job in implementing this program and including persons. We, and I won't go into all the details, I know it's all sketchy. But one of the things we wanted to do was to have a music street festival on October sixteenth from five to eight in downtown Florence. You know, where we have the first Fridays and all of that. This prevent would promote awareness of our programs and services and exposed our targeted population and other populations to primarily African-Americans and Hispanics that were recognized earlier today, to downtown Florence and provide financial support to local small businesses. It was vividly apparent that no matter what the intent for the event that was given when we contacted the downtown development director, the Florence County Downtown Development Director. They, it seemed that the intent was to deny our application. This saddened me greatly. I read queer and I talked to Mr. Williams about it. And I actually was supposed to present at last meeting, but Mr. Williams was having some conflicts. And so he said, well, let's do it next month. He's not here, we buried him yesterday. But I'm going forward with what our comments is because many of the things that you heard about Mr. Williams, one of them is justice, he fought for justice, just as I have, and equity among all peoples. And so we were told, my team was told, that means me too, that it was clear that no matter what we said, we felt it was said that closing the streets downtown, while it could be popular and appealing endeavor for many organizations and organizations, thanks to the success of the existing events that take place there, that it could be disruptive to downtown businesses. That was not our intent. We said October sixteen from five to eight P M. We were further told that it could be costly and since we are a nonprofit organization, and yes, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit, we would be better to choose a low-cost option. We were also told that the dates were booked for the remainder of the year, when we asked about other dates, which was not accurate, as we were provided November and December dates in a follow-up meeting with the city manager. My team met with the city manager and some other city officials. I was not able to be at that meeting. We were told that based on our mission and the population we serve, we would be best suited to host our festival on Sanborn Street. I read in the paper with great interest. I graduated from Wilson High School. I read where Florence wants to be an all-American city. These are not, this is not the attribute of an all-American city. All-American cities are inclusive and they support everyone and encourage everyone. They don't imply or exhibit biases towards a particular group of population without doing further discussion. And it could very well be that Sanborn Street might be a more convenient venue, given this COVID environment. But that is not the way that we treat the least of these, if we want to say that. And so I appear before you today, Mayor Myers Urban and members of the City Council, Councilman Schofield, Councilman McCall, Councilman J. Bailey, Council, Councilwoman Gibson Highmore, Councilwoman Barnes. There's another one. I can't see. Councilwoman. Thank you to say to you. And I hear Mr. Williams whispering in my ear. We want to continue the partnership that we have here, but we would not, I would not. It's irresponsible of me to have our services and our participants and our people to be categorized and judged in, in, in a manner that is not conducive to this society. I realize that we are all on edge and we're living in turbulent times, but we have to be respectful of each other. And I, I feel personally insulted and insulted for my team that they were trying, they, they were directed or pushed, not even give, not even ask. You know, we could have had a donor who said, I'll pay for all of the, everybody to go there. You don't do that. And so what am I asking for today? I bring this to your attention. And I ask that as we continue as a city, if we want to be recognized as a city, we need to be inclusive. We need to be considerate and we need to not try and label people, but help them to be the best that they can be. I will be back to talk about our partnership and our work. And I thank you for your time. And I will be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Do we have any comments that, so? Well, Ms. Robinson, as you know, we've not known each other a long time. So thank you, and I, when it comes to the partnership in the city, this as a whole, thank you for all that you do to be sure that a city always continue moving forward to be an inclusive city. And we are aware that if there's any time that there's any perceived things that may present that, it is good to bring it forth so we can always work on and address it. And so thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore.
Ms. Robinson, correct me if I'm wrong, your original date was not on a Friday, it was on a Saturday, right?
That's correct.
So to close a street downtown on a Saturday would not have hurt the businesses because there's not as many people in that area. And I think it was mentioned that you were going to give vouchers or something to some of the participants that eat in the different restaurants.
Yeah, they, the staff had worked that, what I thought was very creative and neat. Yeah, they, the staff had worked that, what I thought was a very creative and neat proposal for downtown. They had, they had, Lirnie can share what they were planning to do if you're interested in hearing. But yeah, but it was, I thought it was quite creative.
So actually you was gonna bring, bring business to downtown, not take business away, right?
As I said, we want to be good corporate citizens, no matter how small, if it's ninety-nine percent, we could be the one percent to help bring us over. So, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I was correct there.
Thank you for that. You're correct.
But at this time, Ms. Robinson, do you have a planned date at a location at, at um the farmers market, correct?
We did. We, we went back and and regrouped and then and keep in mind the um CDC guidelines and since COVID has resurfaced in a more vicious manner.
October sixteen, October twenty-third, we will be live streaming from the City Senate, the farmers market on Saturday.
Well, thank y'all first of all for working with the downtown development manager office to be able to get that plan together. But also from this point that if you know that in the future that you're planning to do this event, I believe that the downtown city manager, the town city manager would gladly work with you for a few events. And so um at this point, though, you are set up to do this one coming up October and
October twenty-third.
Okay.
Are you looking for the same time?
Forty-nine.
It'll be forty-nine October.
And so you, and are you looking at any future events that you might need to have to bring?
We, we wanted to get this one done.
So right now, you just gonna do this one and?
Yes.
So uh thank you for that and I'm glad that you were able to find a happy medium. It may not be the one that you sought out, being perfection of what you wanted. But I assure you that as we move forward, that I believe that all the staff and management will be very attentive to be sure that there's any precept of any possible exclusion that it would be addressed to chairman.
And let me say, Mayor and council members, we could have come to this conclusion ultimately, but it's the tone, it's how you say stuff.
Right.
And it's how you, how you, how you present to people. I wasn't a part of that conversation, but I know my team. And I'm probably more volatile than any, all of them together. So I know they were but uh it's not from a mean-spirited piece, but it's from a passion.
Right.
And so um I bring this.
Would we thank you and I thank councilman. Okay. Okay, well, going on long history meeting, I know. So but thank you for you and your team and us also I thank the city manager for y'all being able to work together to come to Mr. Common Brown.
Yes, I have not met the city. Where is the city?
Okay.
But I'm gonna be city manager.
Well, thank you and I hope as these meetings proceed that the communications will be better. So thank you so much.
We had a great relationship with the previous city manager and I see no reason why that can't continue.
I agree.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. So at this time, we were having for us in our public hearing, Ms. Joanne Durant to speak to council on the intersection of Open Avenue and Royal Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um my name is Joanne Durant and I'm, I stand down here on Oakland Avenue and Royal. I stay in Woodland. Uh I lost my nephew in April from a hit and run. He was on his motorrad. And he lost him. The traffic over there is real, real bad. And I wanted to see this, can you help me put a light there if it can go there? I lost uh my nephew. He was my oldest nephew. Got two sons. And I was talking to the McCollum about this and he told me that for me to come in and talk to the city to I said, I will. Because I've been over there, living over there for like thirty something plus years. And we never had an accident there. Or we never had no problem there. The traffic coming out of Royal Street, trying to make that left turn, you can't see because of the, the ABC store there and the people that goes into the store blocks the road where you can't see. Now you can go right. It's easy. But when you try and make this go back left, it's not. And it's hard trying to get out of there. I bushed our school route over there. Um speed limit is twenty-five during the school hours, morning and afternoon. Okay, um when Wilson get out of high, get out of school, the traffic up there is bad because they stop the bus right there on um right between my nursery and store, the um fish market. It stops the traffic red. It stopped the two kids off there. So it was about um, I said about two months ago, a young child coming from Wilson got off the bus. And my nephew, they called my sister-in-law and said that the little boy got hit as he got off the bus going across the street on the other side. The, the bus driver said, the, the stop sign was down. But the little boy was, didn't see the stop sign down, so the car was coming down Royal Street, now Oakland Avenue, coming out Royal, Oakland Avenue and hit him. He wasn't hurt real bad. Uh I don't know as what's, what's his name. But I have a friend that stays on Royal Street and he stays red from the street from her. And she called me, her was on the phone talking, when he got home and he was on crutches. So I would say that's twice up there with bad up there, so bad. And where the new Wilson at now, when they first put Wilson out there, they didn't have no lights up there that catch, none. The first day that school opened up, it was a red there. I saw it myself. Right after that, they put lights there. And those are only lights that's on Oakland Avenue at all. And I would love to see our kids be safer over there, get off the bus in the school zone, because the speed limit is no more than thirty. But I see cars come through there doing forty, forty-five. And that's, this, it's the way it tends. It's hard. When you're trying to watch a person driving like that, and then you got school kids walking from school, like North Vista. You got a school crossing guard up there at the corner, but the kids don't go there. That's all. They'll go all the way down there by the harvest to get crossed. And I don't understand that, but that's our kids. And I would love to let someone help me try to get some light there so we can save our kids in this neighborhood, in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is, might say it's not the best, but we live there. That's our home. That's where we stay. And with the progress, the new apartment where Royal Garden used to be, they done upgraded. The ones on the right-hand side of Royal Street, you got kids there. Oakland Plantage, Oakland, Vanilla Trace, it's big. You got a lot of kids there. They got all that, got all that over there. So it's, it's, it's a problem with our kids coming trying to get to school and back from school with the cars speeding through there. Even during school time. And I would love to see if someone can help me protect our kids, like I said before. I would love to see that. But I don't know, can y'all help me suggest or go to someone like the city or the state and see can we get a light there? And if we can do that, that'll protect a lot of our kids. Because it's hard. It's real hard up there. You can't see. It's bad. It is real bad. And I would love, since I lost my nephew, it hurts to see the traffic come through there every day, every day. So they had a police officer sit there, I say about a week to monitor traffic. No one's feeding. But you see the officers right there. That was it. Not a bad game again. We don't have no one there to monitor that traffic during the school hours. And it's, it's real bad. And I hate to say it, but it is, it is. And I've been living in Florence for fifty-seven years and I know if we can try to get a light there, like they got the lights up there at the um pets up to Oakland Avenue, where you got traffic both sides coming out, left and right, and coming out of Oakland Plantage and Royal Street. If we can get something there to help our kids, I would love to see that. I really would. It'd help save our children. But this, it's bad when you lose someone that's so close to you from a hit and run.
Well, I'd like to say first of all, thank you for bringing that to our attention and in the course of the conversation with um Councilman McCall who did address that some, the city manager is aware and we have actually spoken on this subject already. So knowing that even with Councilman McCall bringing this forth, this action is already starting, taking place to address this issue. But I do want to recognize Councilman McCall who raised his hand.
Yep. To the, to the best of my knowledge, um I think I received a phone call after, I guess the the child was hit by a bus and I, I want to say it's, it's more than, I think you mentioned too, I know for a fact, I know many accidents um that happened in the same um intersection area. I wish the city could put a light there, but to the best of my understanding, I think it's a state road. Um and the state has already, the city has already made the request, the DOT, uh how long it takes the DOT to complete the feasibility study on whether or not a light should be there, I can't say. But we've already, the city has already taken the steps to get the ball, moving on it. Um get up, you know, I'm, I'm all about solutions. I think we tried to put an officer there uh in the meantime and it helped. So you're saying they helped some, but I guess you need to come back out there again and um um and and possibly slow the traffic down, but I agree with you. I know coming, if you come to the stop sign coming up Royal Street and you look to the right, you have more light than you cannot see because if cars right at the liquor store, you cannot see. Um and cars are coming across the little uh uh, is that like a hoop or something? Pretty fast. And um so it's, it's very, very dangerous there. Uh um again, it's a state road, so you know, we, the city is sitting still as, as necessary, but again, I wish the city could do it ourselves, but we definitely took the process, took the steps to try and get the process done for you. I don't know who else you can go talk to other than um DOT over there, uh but you know, again, that time contact with them is very tough, but uh again, thank you for coming because um having our citizens come in, actually speak, um you know, truth to power, basically coming here, letting us know how you feel and your neighborhood is very, very strong because it makes all of us aware of what is needed and what we can do to help support you. Um and hopefully we're trying to accomplish that and we continue to do that moving forward. Uh one day, hopefully we're getting a light there for you.
Okay. Thank you also for attending and I would like to, at this point, because we have had discussions, as the city manager, is there any update that you want to share? Because it just, I know everything you just stated, councilman is correct, being state street. And there have been other opportunities where they have looked at the potential of a light there, but you have to count. So I'd like to recognize our city manager.
No, no, ma'am. We haven't, we haven't received any, any updates. We've submitted a, a, a letter to the DOT basically requesting that a, the, the process begin where feasibility studies conducted to determine if it meets the requirements uh that the state has, has laid out for, for traffic lights. So and we went as far as to say, even if a feasibility hasn't been started, can we have a, a discussion about it? So, but we've not received response, but yeah.
Thank you so much for the manager. Um so we will proceed with the process of seeing what direction or information we get back from the state. And I would encourage you to get the city manager's information and y'all stay in communication through this process, but thank you for initiating this process.
Okay.
So we can see what potentially could be done and what may not be to get done. And even on that letter, if we have to look at to some of the state representative, that would be another route. But let's see what information we will receive back.
Okay.
But thank you again. Um do you know the council person? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore.
Yeah, I just want to agree with you. It is very hard making a left turn right there. You're almost afraid to turn the left because you don't know what's coming actually from the end. And yes, I would love to see a light there. Um when they do that study, DOT, it's such a long process. I remember some years back, they wanted to get a light on Oakland Avenue, not at that location, but further back toward the park area.
Yeah.
And still can't get anything. But hopefully, maybe if we go after them harder, it'd be nothing impossible. We just have to go after them really hard and stay on top of it.
Okay, then.
Thank you very much so for your concern.
All right. I know you're very much committed to this. Thank you so much. That concludes the appearance of the full council. At this time, we will move into our ordinance imposition. Our first ordinance, ordinance deal number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven for a second reading. And this ordinance is in relation to early purchase. This ordinance is an ordinance to amend the budget for the state of Florence, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July the first twenty twenty-one, ending June the third of twenty twenty-two. Do we have a, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? If not, always in favor, signify by I. Those opposed like sign, but the record's like that the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight for a second reading, which is a bill registered to carry over islands. Is an ordinance to amend the budget for the state of Florence, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning June, July the first to twenty twenty-one, ending June the third of twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
It's a problem motion is second. Is there any discussion? You know, all those in favor signify by I. All those opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine for a second reading. And this is an ordinance to annex parcels located at fifteen twenty-four McKinney Court, identified as Florence County tax map parcel number zero one four six one dash zero two dash zero zero five. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
You have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. And in a opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next, we will move into introduction of ordinance. The first ordinance that we have is bill number twenty twenty-one dash twelve, which for a first reading, at this time, the applicants have requests that this item be deferred, so it's therefore deferred. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty for a first reading. And this is an ordinance to authorize the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed three million dollars for the lighting equipment at the athletic complex and other matters relating thereto. Can we have a motion in second so we can hear from Kevin?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. We hear from Mr. Kevin Yoka.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As the mayor stated, you have the four years that you have in the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty for a lease in the amount of three million dollars for lighting and other equipment at the athletic complex. This project was first in an estimate was made of possible projects, where prices never go down, they was go up. So a decision was made to So a decision was made to fund the lighting and fixtures and the netting, certain other pieces of equipment outside the original funding source for the project. And so we'll be soliciting a lease, the RFP will go out this Wednesday, giving banks a couple of weeks to respond. Use this equipment separately outside the original project budget in order to bring the budget into balance. And that concludes my report.
You've heard the report, do we have any questions? Chair recognizes councilman Braddock.
So Kevin, you're saying that three millions is not just for lighting, it's to include all those other things that you mentioned as well?
The lighting is about two million dollars, and then we've got other items such as bleachers, the backstop netting, both of which have been bid, we have not got quotes back yet. On some of these items, bleachers four, fields one through six, so a total of items just less than three million dollars.
And that's everything, bleachers, netting.
Are there any more questions, discussion?
Is there any way you could provide some?
Chair recognizes councilman Sofia.
So anyway, you can provide us a, with a little more data on, on uh, the fixtures. Who the manufacturers are, what's, what size comparison, be able to compare these to other fixtures that we were just recently purchased, so that council can better understand the, the cost difference between the two.
Yes, be glad to say.
Any other questions or discussion? Chair recognizes councilman McCall for first statement, and then we recognize councilman Braddock for second.
So this was already, I, I could be confused with this, but this was already uh, already in the budget, right? Just three million dollars, was it already in the budget? From the previous sixty million dollar bond.
I'm sorry.
From the previous sixty million dollar bond for the, the baseball complex.
Correct, as I stated previously, the, the original estimate for the athletic complex was in the fifteen, sixteen million dollar range. And so therefore, um, when the additional debt was issued. We have funding in the amount of about fifteen and a half million dollars. And when you throw in all the costs together, we're a little over nineteen million dollars. So this lease is necessary to balance the budget.
Councilman. Chair recognizes councilman Braddock.
And with the, with the additional three million, in terms of this is a lease, in terms of repayment. Is, is the funding there to handle that? I imagine it's, it's scalable, you're going from fifteen to nineteen, but as, as far as the ongoing cost of repayment.
Right, it's a, fortunately, because our good local economy, our local option sales tax, which is where this lease will be funded from. We're collecting and anticipated to continue to collect probably two to four hundred thousand dollars extra per year for the foreseeable future. We're actually requesting two different payment plans from the banks. One, a five-year plan, and one a ten-year plan. We'll sit down with staff when the bids come in, a couple of weeks determine which way we want to go, depending on the interest rate, calls obviously.
But the money from the local option sales tax would, would take care of either way, your five words, yeah?
Yes.
Councilman. Is that complete? You know, the councilman. Thank you, Mr. Yoka.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying I. And opposed like sign. Let the record reflect that bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty has passed first reading. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one for a first reading. This is an ordinance to rezon three parcels located at nine hundred Oakland Avenue and six oh seven Maxwell Street. Specifically identified as Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero one one four dash thirteen dash zero zero one and nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero zero two and zero, excuse it, nine zero one one four dash one three dash zero one three. Do we have a motion, so we can hear from Mr. Jerry, this motion second? We have a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I move that we go into executive session to receive information from our attorney on this matter.
Do we?
Need a second.
Do we have, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by I. Those like signs, okay. At this time, we will execute session. And when we left from our second session, we were at the item listed as introduction of ordinance, see bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one for a first reading, which we've had a motion and a second, and we went into executive session. So now all those in, could I, well, we got a motion, so we can hear now from Jerry in reference to this ordinance.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This proposal was originally for Council Hall, March the eighth, and it was referred back to planning commission. Take a closer look at the CR zoning designation as well as alternatives to, to decide. Planning Commission staff did draft some amendments to the CR district, however, planning commission did not approve those, as they felt that there were maybe unintended consequences throughout the city to amending that zoning designation. However, in the process, the applicant did come forward with um, some restrictive covenants on the property that specifically addressed land use as part of that. A- as you recall, it, it is currently zoned NC six point one, um, you know, which is a residential zoning designation. It was applied that zoning designation in um, two thousand eighteen, when the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted. Prior to that, it was on B two, which is a, a, you know, a light commercial district. The proposed zoning is CR, commercial reuse, which is also a light commercial district for designation. And the restrictive covenants that they have proposed uh, does, um, and I'll just read them out. And, and they are, this is based on section uh, four dash fourteen point three of the City Unified Development Code. Whereby it allows uh, planning commission and, and city council to, and the city to enforce uh, certain restrictive covenants when they are pertinent to the intent of the Unified Development Code. Uh, but they did limit um, that there shall be no private clubs on the premise, which, which was a concern of planning commission and, and the community as well as city council. Uh, and also, they came forward with uh, the property owner is prohibited from selling alcohol for on-site consumption. So that would limit uh, bars, clubs, uh, or any, even any restaurant with, with on-site consumption, period. Um, and C, they gave the city of Florence the right to enforce these covenants. Um, and also, as a note, um, the underlying zoning code in the CR does prohibit stores which predominantly sell alcohol, um, even for off-site consumption. So um, a liquor store or a party shop that only sells beer and wine would be prohibited from that location as well. And that's handled in the underlying zoning code for the CR district. Um, but planning commission did approve um, to, to bring these restricted covenants forward. At, at their last meeting on August the tenth, the vote was uh, four to three in favor of the restrictive covenants and, and bringing the rezoning and the covenants back to planning commission. And this concludes session.
Do we have any discussion? So I do want to be clear, you're saying there was actually a quarter-three vote, it was not a unanimous vote, correct?
That's correct.
So, okay. So you've heard a discussion, you've heard the vote, and are you ready for a question? All those in favor of moving forward with this outline, with any further communication necessary being held by our city attorney? Please signify by saying I. All those opposed like signs, nay? Alright, let it be reflected that the ordinance has passed the first reading, but follow up with our attorneys. Next, we would enter into our introduction of resolutions. We have addressed the first two resolutions. We presently have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, which is a resolution by the city of Florence declaring its intent to reimburse certain funds, part accounts of the city from the proceeds of a tax exempt borrowing for certain public infra- infrastructure and capital improvement. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we are now here for Mr. Yoka.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This resolution, twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, is a companion to the ordinance I, I feared before you earlier. Since the lease that, that we discussed earlier will be a tax exempt lease. The first invoice for the lighting for the athletic complex will be due and payable before the lease is closed. And therefore, since the lease is tax exempt, IRS regulations require the city to adopt reimbursement resolution that will effectuate our ability to reimburse ourselves from the proceeds of the lease, even though we've paid the first invoice before the lease actually closes. We expect the invoice to come in sometime in the middle of next month, and this lease probably will not close until the end of October, the first of November. So we need to have this resolution adopted to comply with IRS regulations. And that concludes my report.
Is there any discussion, any questions from the, any council members? Hearing none, all those in favor of the pass of this resolution, signify by I, please. Opposed like sign. Thank you, ladies, let the resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two has passed. Thank you, Mr. Yoka. At this time, we will proceed to report to council. First, we will have appointments to boards and commission. And from this, we were here from the city manager, Mr. Scotty Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we have six boards and commissions that actually have vacancies or expired terms. We start with our accommodations tax advisory committee. There is one vacancy on this board from this committee, Ms. Margaret Nash stated that she would not like to be reappointed. We have applicants Jacqueline Campbell, Nathaniel Mitchell, Michael Tommy Phillips, Wadi Snowden, and Gerald Stevens. Uh, this appointment does fall to Councilwoman Moore.
Chair recognizes councilman Moore.
I'd like to appoint Jacqueline Campbell, please.
Now, some motion from councilwoman, do you have a second for the nomination of Jacqueline Campbell? So it's been motioned by Councilwoman Moore, and second by Councilwoman Barnes, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Jacqueline Campbell being appointed to the accommodation tax advisory committee, signify by saying I. A opposed like sign. Let it reflect that Ms. Jacqueline Campbell has been appointed to the accommodation tax advisory committee.
Our next board is the Board of Zoning and Fields. Uh, we have one applicant, Mr. Nathaniel Poston. Um, Mr. Poston would like to be reappointed to the board, and that falls to Councilwoman McCall.
I'm gonna defer on this one.
Our next uh, board is the Construction and Maintenance Board of Adjustments and Appeals. There are two vacancies on this board. Both Mr. Will, William Wilcox and Mr. Gary Buller uh, has asked to not be reappointed to these boards. The appointments do require special techni- tech, technical assistance there with an engineer and mechanical contractor. Uh, and Madam Mayor, these appointments for our code falls to you.
And Scotty, now, we have, we have applicants specifically to engineering.
We do not have any applicants.
So at this time, I would defer due to the like of the specialties.
Next, we have our aesthetics advisory committee. Uh, there are five seats on this committee to be filled. Uh, we have one applicant, Ms. Claire Brockington. Uh, and our first councilwoman, person to make a nomination would be Councilwoman Barnes.
And this is what, say that again?
This is the aesthetics advisory committee.
Are there any applicants?
We have one, Claire Brockington.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the aesthetics.
This is the aesthetics.
Yeah, I've got to defer, I'm sorry.
You want to defer?
Yes.
That's the only applicant. We do have others uh, to make appointments, Councilman McCall. And Madam Mayor.
I would defer.
Councilman Schofield.
I will, I'm there. I will now make Claire Brockton.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second that Ms. Claire Brockington be appointed to the aesthetic advisory committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those favorite, in favor, please signify by saying I. Those opposed like sign. Let the record for, reflect that Ms. Claire Brockington has been appointed to the aesthetic advisory committee.
And finally, our councilwoman Moore.
Um, that's the only applicant.
That's the only applicant. We have the resilience and sustainability advisory committee. Uh, there are eight seats to be filled. Members must reside or be employed within the city limits. We have, Ms. Claire Brockington has been appointed, so we don't have any applicants. On to public safety. Uh, citizens review board. We have three seats to be filled on, on this board. Applicants must be a city resident and must be at least twenty-one years old. We have a number of applicants, Marsden Alexander, Ms. Claire Brockington has been appointed. Robbie Epps, Frederick Goto, Margaret Hawkins, Deborah Montgomery, Michael Tommy Phillips, Ron Roberts, Wadi Snowden, Victor Webster, and Marion McDowell. Our first nomination goes to Councilwoman Barnes.
Marion McDowell. Councilwoman has nominated and motioned that, that Mr. McDowell be placed on the public safety circuit. Has been drafted second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Marion McDowell being appointed to the safety, public safety citizen review board, signify by saying I. Those opposed like sign. Let the record reflect that Ms. McDowell has been appointed to the public safety citizen review board.
Our next appointment falls to Madam Mayor.
I will defer, but I do have a question, Scotty. Mr. Ron Roberts has, wasn't he appointed to, he serves on another board, correct, at this time?
Correct, uh, Mr. Roberts currently serves on the civic center board. I think uh, Councilman Jubilee uh, recommended him for board, and he declined that appointment at last meeting. So he's still on the civic center board.
Okay, alright, so I'm, I'm still going forward with my referral, I just want to be clear for the record, I knew his names. Thank you.
And finally, we have Councilman Jubilee.
Um, I would nominate Victor Webster.
A second.
So it's a motion, and secondly, that Victor Webster be a candidate for the public safety citizen review board, all those, is there any discussion? If not, all those favor signify by saying I. In opposed like sign. Let the record reflect that Mr. Victor Webster has been appointed to the public safety citizen review board.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our report.
Thank you. At this time, we proceed to have our pots and beautification commission and a report from Mr. Roger Nefaty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the uh, city council here and the previous, or all the support they've given the, excuse me, madam. All the support they've given the parks program is really an outstanding system. We think so, I hope you think so. Through your funding, we have many activities and improvements going on. We've passed out, we've given you a D. Through your funding, we have many activities and improvements going on. We've passed out, we've given you a detailed list. Of all the things that are happening, I'm just gonna highlight a few things and not take up any more of your time. For highlights, we've just recently refurbished Freedom Florence Park. Repairing, replacing playgrounds at all of the city's parks is currently starting to go on. I'm not sure all the bids have been finalized, but I know they're in the works. We're resurfacing all the tennis and basketball courts, upgrading our dugouts. New community centers have been built, enhancing the trail system to connect to downtown is being developed. Light paths are being developed, repairs to Madison Park have been have been taken care of. Expanded. Expanded, the soccer complex is being expanded to include track and field events. And of course, we're opening a new baseball park for the newer flamingos. I thank you all very much for all, everything you do for the parks. We are excited about the year to come.
Do any council member have, want to make a statement, has any questions? If not, thank you so much for your years of dedication to the parks and education. Thank you so much. So at this time, we are proceed in our agenda to our committee report. First, we have a report from our Business Development Committee. Can we please hear from that chair?
Their Business Development Committee met and we. Received input from Brianna. Brianna Dennis, thank you, with the. With regard to the. That's right, yeah, the incubator. Called, my mind didn't write this morning, sorry about that. It's been a long executive session. But with regard to the incubator that we had, and we received input from her, and she gave us some very good information. We then followed up with a. Conversations that we had discussing. Where we were and what additional resources we could apply to. And how that integrates with the. Marketing of the city and as well as the community. And in particular, we looked at some of the corridors, and we wanted focus on some of these corridors coming in and out of the city. And how we can address those corridors to do some improvements along the way. The. Results are, we saw some additional information to get feedback on what opportunities may be out there. And get some feedback on that and how we can address these corridors coming in and out of the city to enhance them. And bring about. Improvement, business opportunities all across the whole city. And focusing on how we can transform these corridors from. Into more vibrant, integrated parts of the city that have a more profound impact. So that was a predominant part of our conversations that we had at that time. And. No action was taken by, no votes were made. To come before council at this time. If there's any other members of committee who would like to speak up and add anything additional, certainly I would open the floor for them at this point.
Thank you, Chair, for that report. If there's no further discussion, we will move forth without reports of the, we are here for the chairperson from the Community Development Committee.
Our community, our committee will continue its listening tour. That has been with great success thus far, and so on October the fourteenth, we will be. Having a conversation with the faith-based community to, for us to brainstorm in ways of bettering our community. What we could do with the faith-based community in partnering with them. And so, other than that, we are moving forward with. That and the issues that we've already reported.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If there's no further discussion, we will move forward with Adam C, a report from our Marketing and Public Relations. We're here for that chair.
We met on September eighth, which was last week at four o'clock. We took information in on a different partnerships that we can collaborate with. Other government entities in regard to marketing our cities and making sure that we're not crossing. Into each other's boundaries and making sure we're staying within our own lanes, but also finding ways to continue to partner again. Making sure that we're better portraying to our internal customers and our external customers on what the City of Florence is actually doing and what we wanted to do in the future. Secondly, we talked about the next steps for the city moving forward in regards to the All American City. I think. We've already got a hint on what the the next thing may be. And the city is already taking steps moving forward already on how to make sure that we can develop a plan. To effectively win that destination of All American City. I mean, lastly, we spoke about branding again. This is a long-term goal for branding as well, and how do we move from the full life, full forward branding to something that is. Something unique for the City of Florence itself. We talked about different things and how we can bring that forward, and we'll meet. As of now, I think it's ten of the third, the third Wednesday of next month. I think that, yeah, third Wednesday of next month, we'll further discuss these items at the next meeting. And also to, if any other members want to say anything that I'm missing.
Thank you, Chair, for that report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, our reports from committee is complete. And at this time, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following items. First item is to receive legal advice related to COVID nineteen pandemic thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. And our second item will be to receive legal advice related to the Downtown Economic Development Project thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. Do we have a motion to go into second? What is the special, we are now proceed to executive, return from executive session, at which point there was no actions taken of on the follow. Out of the first item that we've received was. Legal advice relates to COVID nineteen pandemic, which is item number thirty dash four dash seven eight two. But there was no action taken. We're just, we'll continue to have the staff and our legal attorney to follow through and watch this item. The second item that we had in our executive session was. An item to receive legal advice related to the Downtown Economic Development Project, which is item number thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. And also, from this item, we did not take any. Actions on either these items. We continue to follow these items and seek information. And at this time, if there's no further discussions, I will entertain a motion that we. It is a proper motion, it's second. Any question, all those favor say aye.